In order to comply with Section 2.2-3711D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on April 27, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Strauss, seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? It's unanimous, and so we have certified the closed meeting. I will now call on Ms. Hines for an amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that was blessedly short. Thank you. I thought it was going to go on longer. So, yeah, my motion is I move to amend -- my amendment is I move to amend the main motion by striking, quote, "and nonvested members as of June 30, 2017," end quote, and striking, quote, "minimum retirement age of 55," end quote, and replacing it with, quote, "requirement that age in service equal 90 or normal Social Security retirement age with at least five years of service," end quote. These result in savings of $2.3 million in the FY 2018 approved budget.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, this is not easy. We have been talking about this for a long time, and I think we all want to preface whatever we do here tonight with the reality that we don't want to do anything that changes benefits for our teachers. We don't. The ERFC is a really important part of our compensation package. It is something that we hope attracts and keeps people here. But once again, and again, and again, we face significant revenue shortfalls. In addition, you know, we find that ERFC, our supplemental pension, has significant needs every year, and they do affect our operating budget. Market and economic forces have been a challenge for pensions generally and for our ERFC in particular. If we look back over recent years, it's not done that well. We have been looking into, you know, the management and investment advice at ERFC to make sure that we're getting the best advice and service, and I think we'll continue to make sure that we're monitoring that. I'm also supportive of joint work with the county board on employee benefits, which I think can follow after this. We may find efficiencies in that work, but I think we have to recognize that we need to make some marginal changes now. I do not support the main motion. I think changing benefits for current employees, even nonvested, is a breach of promise, and we've already talked about that. And I want to thank staff and the ERFC Advisory Board, employees, retirees, and community members for weighing in with opinions and with some potential approaches. We've spent a lot of time looking at these and debating them, and I think the approach in this amendment, which is a rule of 90 and some other adjustments for new employees only, will provide some real short-term and long-term savings and maintain the strength and community support for our supplemental pension plan. And if we could show the chart, one of the attachments to this is the eligibility impact of changing the minimum age, and I wanted to show that just so folks could see. You know, these were the, you know, the buckets that we were sort of looking at as potential ways to go. And if you look at the rule of 90, it's down there, I think it's fourth from the top. You'll see that it's actually more advantageous than going to an age of 60. It's more advantageous for employees. It's not as advantageous as 55. That's true. But it is similar to the VRS, and it is consistent with county pension as well. So, it also produces savings, it would produce savings in fiscal year 18 of $2.3 million and long-term savings of about $16 million annually, and $16 million is real. That's a chunk of money every year. That's, you know, we're talking about raising class sizes this year to save $14.7 million. So, those are the trade-offs that we have to make, and when ERFC every year becomes more expensive, we do have to do something in order to make sure that we maintain a defined benefit pension for our employees. The political environment is real, and we want to make sure that this is sustainable. I look forward to Ms. Corbett Sanders' amendment, and I, which I hope is coming soon, because I think it will be better from the perspective of our employees. So, I will be supporting that amendment. But I would just say, this conversation is difficult, but at the end of the day, I know that we all remain committed to our promise to provide a secure and dignified retirement to our teachers as part of a compensation package, a full compensation package that is competitive and respectful.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. I do support this amendment. I think that it improves our ability to keep it funded and to keep this defined benefit pension fund sustainable over time. We are, the school board is going to have to put more money into the pension fund. We have already been told that, and there is a request from the actuaries and our Board of Trustees to add another $10 million to the fund. And as I noted before, while we are funded at about the average level of other public pension funds, it is 76%. Over time, I would like to see that funded better, or I think we run the risk of losing the fund, and I don't want to do that. What we are talking about tonight does not impact current employees. It doesn't impact anybody who is retired. We've made promises to those folks. It is for new hires only. It does create another wrinkle, and this fund has been changed dramatically in the past. But again, just as we struggle to keep, to be able to continue for everybody to have affordable health care, and that's been a challenge, and we've had to make adjustments in our health care program to keep down increases, I think it is the only responsible thing is to look both short-term, but more importantly, long-term, because as you know, the actuarial projections to keep pension funds healthy, you are looking over 30 years. And if you don't take care of the plan, you begin to either dramatically constrain the operating budget, but politically, the reality is such pressure to phase out the plan. I do not want to phase it out. I want to keep it healthy, funded, and that, so that we have a system whereby the combination of ERFC, VRS, and Social Security allows for a decent retirement. Yes, it is not gold-plated, but that it allows our teachers to retire and to be able to sustain the next chapter of their life with an ability to go on. So, I do approve and will support this amendment. Thank you.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I have a point-and-order question, because I understand that in our package, there's not an amendment, that there's another amendment forthcoming, and--
No, but what's your--
But if that amendment amends this amendment, shouldn't we be discussing Ms. Corbett's--
I'm calling on Mrs. Corbett Sanders to make her amendment.
Okay.
Misses Corbett Sanders?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment that, to amend the motion to set the period for calculating the final average salary at three years to be consistent with the other pension programs in Fairfax County. I think that that is an appropriate adjustment and one that has us on par with the rest of the county services. There is a slight change to available funds this year. I understand it will have a budgetary impact, but that it-- Oh, sorry. And Mrs. Hines, are you seconding?
Are you finished, Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, I am.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Hines. Mrs. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your amendment to Ms. Hines' amendment?
Yes, and I apologize for my enthusiasm of digging right in, but I do feel that as we talk about one Fairfax and we talk about having a consistency as much as possible on pension funds and the conditions of the funds, the retirement benefit, that having the last three years as the average is the appropriate one, because that's consistent with the other county employees. And for the VRS, the VRS has, the VRS hybrid has the exact same dates as the, as far as the rule of 90. And so, this is consistent with that, so that the retirement benefit would be made available at the same time. So, for administrating the fund, that does, what I understand is, does provide for some efficiencies, but I do think it's critical to have that three-year as the average for retirement benefit.
Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, ideally, this should have been part of my amendment, and because it's my understanding that it's very important to employees that we not extend the average, the number of years over which the average is taken at the end of your career for your pension benefits. That would, you know, significantly decrease pension benefits long-term, and I was hoping to be able to take that out as I created my amendment, but I was asking questions of staff about whether or not we could price that, in a sense, you know? Do we know? Because we were given options that were sort of packages, and the actuaries, you know, figured out what the savings would be on the packages. And so, the answer I got was that the, and it would be lower savings. I mean, we are reducing the savings, but my understanding was that we didn't have enough clarity about what that difference would be. But I think Ms. Corbett Sanders has been able to get some more clarity, so maybe, staff, if you wouldn't mind speaking to that. I mean, do we know how much less the savings would be, or at least do we have a pretty good estimate of how much less?
Let me start off by saying, it is hard to calculate without actuaries actually running the numbers, but based on the original calculations, I believe the extending the final average compensation was approximately 25% of the savings. So, we're really, really guesstimating the reduction of the savings to be somewhere around $700,000, $700,000 to $800,000, but really, we can't say for sure what that amount's going to be until they actually do the calculation.
Okay, so I guess to follow up then, do we have enough comfort to, tonight, make this decision?
I think if this decision is made, we would probably have to project our budget savings to be about $700,000 below where we currently have at 2.3 is our current savings. So, we would probably reduce that by approximately $700,000 as we go to balance the budget.
Okay, for FY '18.
Correct.
And it would affect out-year savings as well?
Correct.
Presumably, yeah. All right. Well, I think it's still a good change. You know, I think we've been trying to thread the needle here and balance what we feel like we need to do for the long-term health of the pension and for the long-term health of our operating fund, but also to try to do things that are not, you know, are the least onerous that we can find for employees. So, I appreciate Ms. Corbett Sanders following that up and proposing this amendment. I will support it. Ms. McLaughlin?
On its merits alone, I'm very happy to support the amendment, because for anyone who's paying attention, it's actually in my amendment that follows Ms. Hines' amendment, and the reason my amendment's there is because I don't agree with Ms. Hines' amendment. And so, anything that helps improve Ms. Hines' amendment is good for employees. Yes, my colleagues are correct that, you know, the three years of service is consistent with what the county currently has for its employees, but as we'll be talking about the main amendment coming out of Ms. Hines, if we're so committed to consistency, then I don't understand what we're actually going to continue talking about here tonight, because if everybody wanted to closely align with the county, we don't know what the county's going to do now and the next year. So, everything we talk about from here on in, it's all a guessing game and a moving target. And I will also point out to my colleagues that we were regrettably the recipients of an email from a former school board member who chastised us for not being prepared at the table, for doing messy work at the table, and right now, you're watching us amend amendments with no analysis and information of what then the cost savings will be. We've been assured that this amendment here is going to now help us save money, but actually, we don't know what it'll be now, because we're changing it at the table. So, I'm only supporting this because it reflects what I put in my amendment, that if we were going to force to make a decision tonight, how do we best honor our employees that we talked about what changes might occur? So, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'm happy to support your amendment to the amendment.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, it seems the Board has gone from making a bad decision to amend the plan in advance of meeting and concert with the county, but now is actually clouding even what we are possibly amending and taking guesstimates from trustees of ERFC at the table prior to us voting. I really don't think I can support this amendment. I don't think I can support the motion, and I don't think we should be making these changes tonight.
Ms. Hough?
So, since we're guesstimating, is there a guesstimate on the, I believe with the current motion, it was 2.3 this year and $16 million in the long run? So, is there a guesstimate on the long run? No? No idea? Is it, would it also be a 25%? No idea?
I'm not going to state a number, because we really don't know what that number's going to be.
I can't support something when we have no idea.
Mr. Moon?
I am not going to support Ms. Corbett Sanders' amendment, but I'll be supporting Ms. Hines. When we first began this whole journey, we did look at, you know, our compensation, you know, our compensation package is 90% of our budget, and consisted of two components, salary plus benefits. But the cost of benefit has been growing, and I recall that at one point, I've been on board for 18 years, and one, you know, at one point, the cost of benefit was about a third of a salary. For the last years approved the budget, it's a 44%. It has grown, and is projected to continue to grow, which means, which means as the benefit, cost of benefit grows, that has a tremendous impact upon our ability to provide higher salary. So, it's a zero-sum game. It's a zero-sum game. You provide more benefits, then salary is going to come down. So, I was weighing between more benefits, higher salary, with a limited amount of funding we have, and based upon the survey results and conversation with the employees some time ago, that for the new employees' list, new employees' list, we will put more on the salary side and slightly less, slightly less on the benefit, because we can only do so much with what we have. So, when this journey began, I was coming from that perspective. Initially, I was the one, I have been the one among twelve of us managing ERF discussion for the last nine years, nine months, and that is why when February 9th, when the motion, we had proposed the motion, that, the main motion, I was the maker of the motion, whether I believed in that or not, because that was the sense of the board out of the work session immediately prior to the meeting. So, that was the main motion, and then there was a motion to postpone, and we had subsequent discussions. It was quite apparent that that main motion, as made by me in February, did not have enough support, support. So, that main motion, if passed, would have resulted in $4.7 million of savings for the FY '18 budget. Now, that didn't have, that wouldn't have enough support. So, I am looking for a compromise. I've been looking for a compromise, and I thought when Ms. Hines proposed her amendment yesterday, I thought there was a compromise that I could live with. First of all, it only affects, it's not going to affect current employees. It only affects the future employees. For the future employees, we're going to put more on the salary than benefits, and I thought that there was a better approach going forward, going forward. With Ms. Corbett Sanders' motion, that is bringing, it's a old guesstimate. I think that's what I'm hearing from the staff at this point. I mean, that concerns me when it is just a guesstimate at this point, because we are going to be dealing with a budget. We need to have a better number than just a guesstimate. So, when the number is now rather than, not even 2.3, but the savings would be only 1.6, which is about a third of our initial discussion going back to February, which was a 4.7, that greatly concerns me. Earlier today, we had a budget work session. We saw the gap. We saw the gap. We still have at least $26.7 million of a gap that we need to meet, and that's going to, I mean, I am, I'm reminding my board members, there's no other way, but in order to meet that gap, it's going to come out of our employees' pocket from their salary. Now, this reducing the amount of savings from further from our ERFC discussion is going to have a more impact upon our ability to provide a better compensation, better salary for our teachers. Thank you.
Ms. Palchek?
Thank you. I too, while I will support Ms. Corbett Sanders' amendment, will not be supporting this motion. This has been an interesting process. I don't usually talk about process at the table. I let my colleagues do that. But I know we've gone through quite a few changes since the initial motion presented by the budget chairs, which I assume would continue to come from the budget chairs. I think I'm at the point where I'm only ready to make minimal changes that will impact our employees, and a little bit over $1 million is not going to make up for the salaries that we want to increase. That being said, I do hope that as we move forward and whatever avenue we choose to get more information, that we as board members who do have oversight over this plan will work together to have that and to have informed decisions. I take full responsibility for my ignorance coming into this process, but I was under the understanding and the feeling at our last work session that there seemed to be general consensus over not affecting any current employees, and it seemed to me from our speaking on Monday that we were mostly around the first column, which was age 55, to come more in line with where the county is, and that as we move forward, if we, whatever decisions are made, whatever joint work happens with the county is the next step. I realize it's not, I don't know, it's not beneficial to make several changes, but while I do not want to delay the vote, I'm not comfortable making an additional change, which I had it here somewhere. Both the Pew Research Center and the Boston College Retirement Center have done quite a bit of research, and while the conclusions say that changes do need to be made to pensions in order to keep them viable, the benefit cuts can have consequences on the quality of state and local workforce. It should not be ignored. So, I don't think we have that yet. I don't think we know what it means to be making more drastic changes to our incoming employees, and so my vote will be to make minimal changes. When we get there, I will be supporting Ms. McLaughlin's motion. In the meantime, I will support this amendment to reduce the FAS from five years to three years.
Starena Kofax?
I have a question for staff. When we were doing our, when our new salary scales are going to be in place, when we get everything fixed, wasn't the trend line, almost in the end, the salaries plateaued? Is that, that's correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. And I know you can't predict, like, what year span those could be, because it, but it was plateauing for that la, was there, on the graph, I'm trying to think, was there, which, what number of years where that plateaued?
I believe it was that year 23? It was earlier. It, 2021 is where I believe it's starting to plateau. We could look that up and get back to you quickly, because we have the information here.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Quickly.
All right, I will take a turn. Yes, I have go-backs, but first, I'm going to take a turn to speak. I will not be supporting this amendment. I'm looking at where we are with our efforts to control some expenses. I want to remind people where, how we started down this road. First of all, our increased pension costs this year, VRS was an added $25.5 million. We have no control over that whatsoever. It's a bill that the state sends us, and we pay the pension, $25.5 million. For ERFC, the increase that we learned about back in the fall was over $11 million increase just to stay where we are. For the F C E R S, the county program, which we also have no control over, the added cost was $4.7 million. If you add all of that up, that's approximately a step increase. That's approximately a step increase that we are saying, if we do nothing, we will have to pay this just to stand pat on our pensions, to no improved benefits for anyone, but it's also the equivalent of a step increase. We started looking at how might we have some cost savings in the plan and still keep the plan as a defined benefit plan and keep it whole, do our best by our employees, but also save money, because our top, our top priority continues to be teacher salaries. And I understand this is part of a package, but it's not the same as cash in the paycheck. And we have to find a way to get more cash in the paycheck at the end of the day. So, where we are, we started out in the fall, and we gave the superintendent the direction to make certain changes that would result in $4.7 million in savings in this, in this plan for the upcoming fiscal year. In February, we decided we needed to delay it and think about it some more, so we did think about it some more. We had a lot more conversation. We had a lot more reports on it, and so we got different options for that. And one of the things I liked about, and do like about Ms. Hines' amendment, is that even though it cuts in half our savings this coming fiscal year, we can see significant savings in the out-years, and that is going to be important to the long-term health of this pension plan. Now, I have been persuaded, in part because we do have an alternative now, that we shouldn't have our changes apply to our, any of our current employees. I originally was supporting the plan for the 4.7 that did have our non-vested employees as part of the package, but when I look at this alternative, the rule of 90 alternative, where even though it's half or less than half, in the-- in the short term, we can see long-term savings. With this change, we don't know what the long-term savings will be. We can't, we don't know. We can't tell. Our folks can't tell. What we do know is that it will again about cut in half the fiscal year savings for this coming fiscal year. So we're, and we know it will be less. Whatever it is, we know it will be less. So I have a hard time thinking that, particularly since this applies, we're not making the changes that we were talking about before. I think we've decided that that was the wrong course to take. But I prefer Ms. Hines' original amendment. I think it makes more sense. And so I will not be supporting Ms. Corbett Sanders' amendment to the amendment. And now I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Just a point of clarification. All of the numbers we see before us are pretty much guesstimates. The guesstimate over the 2.3 is based on assumptions. But Mrs. Darinette Kofax makes a very important point, which is that salaries at the end of a teacher's career plateau. So the wiggle room between three years and five years is actually minimal. But what it does do is ensure that we have equity in how retirements are calculated across each of the professionals in Fairfax County. So for example, we have equity between how the FCERS employee's calculation is, which is three years. We have equity in how our valor employees are calculated at a smaller number of, shorter period of time. And so we really, from my perspective, want to keep it on par with everybody being treated fairly. And I know that there is a will of the board to move forward with doing something. But this is something that at least, if we talk about treating all of our employees across different categories of Fairfax County equally, then at least let's calculate their retirement benefit based on the same period of time, which is three years.
Mrs. Strauss?
I will not be supporting this amendment. I believe that it is, is actually not enough of an adjustment. I was very much in support of Ms. Hines' original amendment. And I remind my colleagues in the previous work session, we are not particularly pleased to have to raise class size or to increase fees or to reduce student programs and to make other cuts. We certainly will be making other cuts. We have 40-some million dollars that we're going to have to reduce out of this budget. And we don't have agreement yet as to what we want to do. And by and large, it's a lot of understanding of what we don't want to do. And our emphasis that we began with was upfront salaries, cash in your pocket. And for that reason, I will not be supporting going to the three-year, remaining at three years instead of the five years as a calculation at the end. Thanks.
Ms. Palchak? Ms. McLaughlin?
I guess I'm going to make a one-last-ditch effort in support of Ms. Corbett Sanders' proposal here for the last three years versus being, you know, final five years. This is people saying two different things and trying to get employees to believe that we're making this decision your best interest. The cost savings in the first year out of $2.3 million, as I noted, it's like not even 2/10 of 1%. We know it's about $7.5 million, according to Sharon Bulova's calculations when they were doing it for the board supervisors, closing our gap. I mean, it's just, this is not about finding coins in the couch cushions. I will never say that $2.3 million aren't important. But I don't think it's fair to employees to say that we're doing this in your best interest. If we want to be consistent with what the county offers its employees now, you vote for Ms. Corbett Sanders' amendment. Unfortunately, we don't know what they'll do a year from now. But that's the closest of what we know that they offer their current employees. And that's what we should be then offering and ensuring. Because we do it for our current employees and we should be doing it for these, this next group of employees, however long these changes stay in place. But it just worries me that I keep hearing this reference point about what a dire financial situation we're in. There are many ways, and it doesn't involve raising the class size, and it doesn't involve going after your step increase, and it doesn't go, you know, go after necessarily the market scale adjustments. We're still trying, for anyone who watched our budget discussion earlier this evening, on how do we focus and strategically target where we find budget efficiencies. But this $2.3 million, there's no reason that this has to be the target, just like any other small line item of $1 to $2 million. So we should be making this decision on what's the best interest of the pension plan and our employees. And at least Ms. Corbett Sanders' amendment here has us in alignment with what we currently will continue to offer our current employees and what the county currently offers its employees. There's no basis, yes, the VRS might say your final five years, but this isn't about the VRS. This is about a local county pension system.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders? You're next. She's, her light wasn't on.
I just wanted to know if you have the answer.
And then you can. Yes. Mrs. Corbett Sanders, did you, did you want to speak? Okay.
What I was going to say is that our employees in the ERFC are actually contributing, when you add up the VRS and the ERFC, it's a significant contribution that they themselves make to their pensions. And it's actually, when you add up all the percentages, higher than the other pension funds that are offered by the county. And so I think this is a very modest change to what is on the table, which actually provides some parity. And so I encourage all of my fellow colleagues to please consider that piece of parity in making sure that the calculation is three years and not five years.
All right, seeing no more lights. Mrs. Darinette Kofax?
Ms. Quinn?
Yes. The new recommended future scale for our teachers, when it's fully implemented, the top step for master lane is 23. And it plateaus from there.
Mrs. Darinette Kofax?
Thank you for that answer.
Is that, okay. Mrs. Schultz?
So I guess I have a question. Because earlier, I was asking about what the unfunded liability was. And you said you didn't know without the actuary having the numbers and running through the process. But somehow, we're able to discern on the fly. Because I'm going to tell you, I didn't know this amendment was here tonight because it wasn't in our package. And yeah, I mean, my apologies. We, I mean, we, you know, you know what's been going on. So I'm trying to figure out, is it $700,000 on a, I mean, like, I feel like we're swagging it. And I agree, I agree with Ms. McLaughlin on the pennies in the couch business. But is it $700,000 or is it, could it be $300,000? Or could it be a million? Like, I mean, on a swag, now I'm like swinging to what Mr. Moon was saying. Like, well, if we don't know, I mean, is $700,000 a reasonable estimate? And based on what? Because I feel like I'm being asked to make a very important decision here. And I understand why the employees want three years. I understand. I understand the five years and anti-spiking. I understand they want a three years because they want consistency. And so I'm trying to make an informed decision on their behalf. And I'm like, well, if it's $300,000 or a million, that makes our job on Monday and in three weeks and next year harder.
We use the percentage that the actuary has provided for us on the very initial valuation that they did for us, which was the age 55. So they did try to say what of the, which portion of the saving was attributable to the COLA adjustment versus changing the final average compensation to three to five years. So we use that percentage. What I'm saying is, as you do different eligibility requirements, those percentages could change. But our best guesstimate was based on the percentages that they provided to us in the initial valuation. And that was approximately 27%. And that was shared with the board members today.
Yeah, I know. That's, that's actually, that's actually where I am as part. So is that how we arrived at 2.3 instead of 4.7?
No, we had the actuaries, we run all the numbers to all the subsequent reports. They just did not break down or bifurcate how much of the savings was attributable to those four different items that we're currently looking at.
So we don't know of the 2.3, what's FAS? What's COLA? We don't know.
All right, the motion on the table is to amend the motion to set the period for calculating the final average salary at three years. All those in favor? Hines, Palchak, Corbett Sanders, McLaughlin, and McElveen. All those opposed?
I'm sorry, what does that count?
I believe that's six.
I need to know the count.
Oh, raise your hand again. I think it was Hines, Palchak, Corbett Sanders, McLaughlin, I beg your pardon, and McElveen. So that's five. All those opposed? Strauss? Evans? Moon? And Wilson? All those abstaining? Schultz? That motion fails. We're back to the, to Ms. Hines' motion. That motion failed. Ms. Corbett Sanders' motion failed. We're now back to Ms. Hines' original motion to amend the motion by striking and non-vested members as of June 30, 2017, and striking minimum retirement age of 55 and replacing it with requirement that age in service equal 90 or normal social security retirement age and at least five years of service. So I have Ms. Hines.
Well, mine would be a go-back. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak to?
I have Ms. McLaughlin.
So my concern with, in particular, this motion is that the Rule of 90 issue is, again, nothing as of now that the county does with its local pension. And so what this means in this amendment, which is why mine that comes after looks different, is because we are telling new employees, unlike the county employees, you will not only pay more toward your local retirement, you will have to work at least four to five more years. Because if someone's 25 years old and gets hired by Fairfax County in this Rule of 90, then they're going to have to work 35 years to hit the Rule of 60. And that is not what the county says to its employees. 30 years means you can retire at 55. So we added five years on there. If you come in at age 22, as some of our teachers do, but not everybody, but some do, you'll still have to work the 34 years in order to get to your 60. So this is why I, I don't understand why this, I mean, sorry, you have to work to age 56, do your 34 years. So you're, you're at least still then finding yourselves that, unless you come in, in that little window, right at age 22, but either way, you're still going to find yourself putting in 34 years before you hit that retirement. I don't understand how that helps and honors our employees with a local pension fund. If the board supervisors, and we'd worked together on this over the next year, and we engaged all of you, and everybody came to an understanding that based on what the VRS does and the county wants to move up and do what VRS does, that would have been a comprehensive conversation. Tonight, it's premature, and so I can't support it. And especially since they now voted down the fact that it's going to still be five years of your salary, not three. And to some of the people out there in the audience that I have really appreciated, who have a totally different perspective on how important it is to reform our pensions, to be fiscally responsible, and the costs involved, don't discount all that. But it should have been done in partnership with the county.
Mrs. Darinette Kofax? Ms. Hines?
Well, thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Corbett Sanders again for taking a stab at that. I think it would have made my amendment more palatable for me because I think it would have made it more palatable for the employees. But I do understand the need to, you know, do something that actually makes a difference to our operating fund and to the, to the fund itself over the long term. You know, when I started this conversation, and as recently as a week ago, I didn't want to do anything. I disagreed with the main motion. I was worried about the fund. I wasn't sure that I understood well enough, you know, the oversight and the management of the fund. And I thought, well, if we're going to do something to help keep the fund strong, let's not, you know, let's not take it out of our employees. But we have had a lot of conversations over the last several months, and particularly lately. And I think, when I took another look at it, the value of the Rule of 90, as I saw it, is that if you look again at the chart, because it's consistent with the VRS, I think the reality is that teachers will wait until VRS, until they vest in VRS to retire anyway because the ERFC is less of a pension. And so I think it sort of makes sense. I think it does make sense for employees, and it saves more money. You know, the challenge is, our conversations with the board supervisors on this sort of thing are necessary. We need to do that. But there is an apples-to-apples problem, you know, between our pension and the county's pension. And there's also an expectations challenge here. Because although we have some good conversations with the board supervisors, they rarely actually are productive in terms of policy outcomes or policy changes. I mean, that's just the reality. So we have to talk to them. But what I'm worried about is that even if we begin this conversation with the county tomorrow, we're not going to see any policy changes come out of it for a while. So making small incremental changes now worry me. And I think that's what Mrs. McLaughlin's amendment is, which would come up after mine, is that from my mind, it's just too small. Because I think it doesn't do enough, it doesn't save enough, there's almost no point in doing it. And we will be back if we don't do enough this year. We'll be, we'll be coming back at this. And this is painful for everybody. Our salaries are not competitive. We know that. Our supplemental pension, on the other hand, does make us competitive. It is unusually rich among school systems in Virginia. And I know we're talking about how we compare to the county government, and that's fair. But the reality is that I think we may be the only school system in Virginia that has a defined benefit supplemental pension, if I'm not mistaken. And that is a selling point. But the monthly paycheck also matters here. With an average household income of over $100,000 a year, our starting teachers need every penny that we can put in that paycheck. And so I think that we have to attract teachers with competitive salaries and keep teachers with a high-quality pension. We're trying to balance everything and do both of those in a tough financial environment. So, you know, I think this is the best compromise that we have right now. So I hope my colleagues will support that.
All right, seeing no other hands that we, Mrs. Schultz? All right, seeing no other hands, that we, Mrs. Schultz?
I have a question, because I'm trying to reconcile, Chairman, how we, so if Ms. Hunt, I don't understand, Ms. McLaughlin, basically, I don't understand where your amendment comes in now.
That's, we need to deal with Ms. Hines' amendment. And if that passes, then I'm going to ask Ms. McLaughlin if she's still, if there's any reason to offer it. But right now, Ms. McLaughlin's amendment is not before us.
But it's not, Chairman?
It's not an amendment to Ms. Hines' amendment. It is a separate amendment.
It's an amendment to the main motion.
It's an amendment to the main motion. So, but at this point, we're voting to see if we want to approve Ms. Hines' amendment. If Ms. Hines' amendment passes, Ms. McLaughlin's amendment would probably be moot, but we can get to that when we get to it.
Can I ask Mr. Moon, because you, in particular, you were offering some very good points earlier. So is your concern that if this doesn't pass, then we're not saving enough, Mr. Moon? Is that, was that the argument that you were making? I'm trying to understand
Yes, that's correct.
That this amendment is saving the most, in your opinion?
Among the amendments, yes.
Compared to the one that just did not pass and the one, should this not pass, the successive one, that would not save enough, in your opinion, either?
You know, from my perspective, Mrs. McLaughlin's amendment on our script is basically same as Mrs. Hines' amendment, as amended by Ms. Corbett Sanders. But Ms. Corbett Sanders' amendment failed, so.
So this preserves the most, this preserves the most, the argument that I understood?
Please speak, Ms. Hines or Mrs. McLaughlin's?
No, this amendment now, you see, I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to carry forward your argument from the amendment that didn't pass. I'm trying to carry forward the logic back to this one, because I don't think that you made the point during this one. So I'm trying to see if-
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. It's a 2.3 million versus 1.6, 1.7 or 6, somewhere around there. So two-
Versus 2.3 if Mrs. McLaughlin gets amended to the main motion.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I was just trying to understand if your logic flowed back to this amendment.
All right, with that, we will vote on Ms. Hines' amendment. I just read it. So all those in favor of Ms. Hines' amendment, please raise your hand. Hines, Schultz, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Darnett Kovacs, McElveen. All those opposed? Palchek, Huff, McLaughlin, and Wilson. I'm sorry?
Corbett Sanders.
Oh, and Corbett Sanders. That motion passes.
Abstain.
I'm sorry?
Do you want to abstain?
No, that was, I'm sorry, there were five noes, correct? Palchek, Huff, Corbett Sanders, McLaughlin, and Wilson. That motion passes. So we now, Ms. McLaughlin, you have an amendment. Do you still want to offer your amendment?
I know my colleagues would love for me to keep this on the table and just extend our evening, but as we're all aware, Ms. Hines' new amendment did take care of the non-vested. And we already voted down the three years versus five years. And, you know, so as a result, and then I had wanted to keep in the main motion the 55, you know, 30 rule, but you also added that in from Ms. Hines' amendment. So essentially, you've all let me know that, no, this isn't working for you. So thank you for the opportunity.
I appreciate that, Ms. McLaughlin. With that, we are back to the main motion as amended by Ms. Hines' amendment. Is there any discussion of the main motion as amended by Ms. Hines? Ms. McLaughlin?
Not to belabor all of this again, but I know it's coming next, which is now we're going to then talk about Ms. Schultz's magnanimous follow-on, which with lofty commitment to partner with the board of supervisors. And so I just feel like it's important to restate again that voting this main motion in means, as I heard from our finance staff, you don't change these things every year because it increases costs to your administration of the program. So essentially, if you vote for this, what you said is, there isn't going to be a purpose to partner with the board of supervisors. We can go ahead and try, and then we'll have the conversation of what that cost will be. So things can always happen, but it's not best practice. And the motion on the table is definitely not this board's best work. We should not have found ourselves doing this tonight. I want to apologize to our employees who we did not effectively engage them, and I hope you will watch closely how the board of supervisors does this over the next year. I think it will be a very strong reflection on what we did here tonight and how that compares to the governance of the board of supervisors.
Mrs. Schultz?
Chairman, I did not have it on, but I would appreciate that before we vote, that there's a rereading, because it's been heavily edited.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I-
Right, the clerk is preparing it. It's in front of us and behind it, but we're in the middle of discussion. So, Ms. Darnett Kovacs?
This was messy tonight, but in totality, what we need to do, as we talked about, we have, we have a significant gap. We talked about, we have been talking about for months, how our uncontrollable costs are not funded by our primary funding body. We are 43rd out of 50 states in K through 12 funding, and it puts us, and we keep getting more and more kids with greater and greater needs. And as we go through processes like this, which are very painful indeed, and I'm sorry so many people left, but in talking to so many people, every single action that we take affects somebody. It affects a child in a classroom, how big that is. But I get very frustrated when I hear my colleagues talk about the good work that happens in other boards and this board, making it seem as if part of the reason we are in this situation where we are in is because there has not been necessary collaboration between the boards, or there has been a point where, no matter what is said, no matter what is done, it is not believed, to the point that a board of, someone on the board of supervisors called another colleague when they said the schools were unfunded, they call that fake news. That is so disrespectful. That is so unbelievable. And I get extremely frustrated when we sit here and we do 10, 12-hour days, and we have the, we are, why would we denigrate the good work that we do and the caring and compassionate way that we are? And I know this didn't look pretty, and the rest of it's not going to look pretty either. But you can't, we, the partnership that we continue to try to have, I want that to happen. I've been wanting it to happen for six years now, six years. And that's all I have right now.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah. Well, I just want to say, I will support the main motion as amended. That's probably clear. You know, I think what happened was, we got to this point, and nobody was really happy about doing anything about this, because, you know, we'd like to just never ever have to do anything that affects any of our employees in a negative way, right? But there was clearly insufficient support for the main motion, because it affected current employees. We just got to that point where that was clear in our conversations. And so, you know, a couple of people put something on the table, Ms. McLaughlin and I. They were different proposals in some ways. It was a close vote, but we ended up with something to go forward with. I will support as well Mrs. Schultz's follow-on. You know, the general idea of having this conversation with the board of supervisors is a very good one. My own opinion is that, is that I think we will go into those meetings having done our part to shore up our pension and to shore up our operating fund with this vote that we take tonight, that will be, you know, our fund and our pension and our operating fund will be in better shape after tonight. That's true, you know. However, this may be an unpleasant outcome for employees. That is true. We have done, we have done good work in the sense, in that sense. And so, you know, I think we'll, I think we'll be able to work with the board of supervisors and, you know, see what they're willing to do, you know, about their employees, so that we can, we can both be, all be taking responsibility for this.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will not be voting in support. However, I do want to make a couple of comments. The first is really just in the language itself. I think, is it, is it really normal Social Security retirement age, or is it full retirement? I mean, that language, "normal" seemed like, it struck me as a word.
Well, that's, that's the language that's there. That was what was-
I suppose it's fine. It's just, just a question. But I actually believe that with the sincerity of this discussion tonight and the indications from the board of supervisors, that actually I believe that despite the long lapse of six years in waiting for cooperation, that there is a sense of urgency both on our board and their board. And I believe actually that with that urgency, we should, I don't think it's best practice to say we're going to do our part tonight. Let's, I believe it'd be better practice to do it in coordination and in concert with the county. And we have, as has been said, we're one Fairfax, and we should make these changes sort of not on the fly here at the DIAS, but in concert with what the county employees generally, and recognizing that different, there are different plans, and they need to be coordinated, because these are county liabilities, even though they are obviously, this relates to the school system. So I would urge everyone to believe in that, that ability of us to work with the county board and to make these changes in a reasonable time period. But I guess I can understand that people have frustration and want to make this tonight.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
These are tough decisions, and they're tough conversations that we've had over several months. And I just want to urge people to realize that nobody makes these decisions lightly, and that the people on this board really have wrestled through these decisions quite a bit. I do support the follow-on motion to have continued work with the county, but I also want to make it very clear that this is, dealing with the ERFC is the responsibility of this school board and the Board of Trustees for the ERFC. It is not the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors to address the pension funds of the employees of Fairfax County Public Schools. That is our responsibility, and that is why I think people have taken so much time and effort and tried to wrestle through this. And where we are at a disadvantage is that we are not in the situation where we can self-fund. We are dependent, we are codependent with the Board of Supervisors on funding for all of our programs. And so that's where there is a natural tension that occurs. I do welcome more collaboration with the Board of Supervisors. I think that that is always helpful. But when it comes to our employees, it is our responsibility to ensure that the full package of benefits, which includes salary, health care, and pension funds, are within the responsibility of this board. And I had urged, and I continue to urge, that when we look at how we do things, that there should be parity and that we should be trying to align our salaries with like jobs for like jobs. But in the same way that there are distinct pension funds for our different types of employees on the county side, this is a unique pension fund to address the needs of educators, and that we want to have all of our educators retire in a manner that allows them to stay resident in this county. And so I just, I wanted to say that because I think it is important for people to understand that all of us have a shared goal on this board. We may get there differently, but we do have shared values when it comes to our employees.
Thank you, Mrs. Corbett Sanders. With that, I'll read the motion as amended. I move that the school board direct the ERFC Board of Trustees to initiate the process to implement the following ERFC Plan modifications, effective July 1, 2017. All ERFC members lowering the interest credit rate, lowering the interest crediting rate on ERFC member accounts from 5% to 4%. ERFC 2001 members hired on or after July 1, 2017, instituting a requirement that age and service equal 90 or normal Social Security requirement age with at least five years of service, increasing the period for calculating the final average salary from three years to five years, changing the cost of living adjustment to equal 100% of the Consumer Price Index, CPIU, with a cap of 4%, and present the ERFC 2001 amended plan documents to the school board for approval by June 2017. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Hines, Schultz, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Darnett Kovacs, McElveen. All those opposed? Palchek, Huff, McLaughlin, and Wilson. Abstaining? Corbett Sanders. That motion passes. I call on Mrs. Schultz for a follow-on motion.
I'm praying this one's easier. I move to establish a joint pension work group with the board of supervisors to review and evaluate county and school pension plans.
A second? Second by Mrs. Huff. Mrs. Schultz, would you like to speak?
Briefly. I don't need the giggles with that. Look, we're, I think that everybody at this table has done their best. I know there's going to be people who are thrilled with what we did tonight. There's going to be people who are disappointed with what we did tonight. There's going to be people in the middle. And if, I'm going to grant that everybody at this table did yeoman's work. I'm not saying that the answers are perfect, but what I can say is that we're, we've got to get better at doing this, and we can't do better lifting our end of the seesaw by ourselves with no help on the other side. We have an obligation as a board not to wait for the board of supervisors to do what they need to do on the county side. But before I ever ran for a school board, one of the first things I wanted to do was begin joint board of supervisor, school board retreats and meetings to handle the witty measures that this county faces. This is a lot of money. It's a lot of people's lives. It's a lot of infrastructure. And there is an unhealthy tension between this board and the board of supervisors. And I think we're on a path where it's getting better. And I think we're on a path where it's getting better and we have to lead from the front and not wait. And I, I, I think this is a lead from the front and I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin's and Ms. Darnett Kofax's comments earlier tonight, that some of this has been done in the past and some of this has been done on, on skipped or, or turf fields, but th- these are the long-term obligations of this county. And I, I have been, I mean, I lived in Fairfax County as a little girl golfing at Fair Oaks Mall. My comments aren't short. I understand that. It's late, I'm sorry. But then there was no 66 and the planning of the Board of Supervisors 40 years ago wasn't effective. And I think we're trying to govern better for, not for now, but for 20 years from now. And that's what's being strategic. And, and I really hope that there is a sincere receipt of this invitation. And I understood what you said earlier, Ms. Darnett Kofax, and who you were saying it about. There has to be an authenticity to governing. There are 22 people in this county that are responsible for billions and billions and billions of taxpayer dollars and the lives of 1.1 million county residents, 188,000 public school kids, 40,000 public school employees. And if we work together more deliberatively, more authentically, more collaboratively with the Board of Supervisors, I think the end product is going to be better. And so that was the impetus for this measure. And, and not only do I hope this is unanimous, I, I hope they sincerely accept this and that we endeavor to work better for, for, for all of our employees.
Mrs. Huff?
Yeah, I don't have much to add to that. I think that's absolutely right on. I was looking to support the 55, which would put us more in line with the county and I think it would have made this conversation maybe a little bit cleaner, easier. So I do have concern of, of what this conversation looks like now, although I still think it's very important and from the comments Board of Supervisors have made and, and their engagement with employees and comments from our board, I think that we all are in a place where we want to play our employees correctly and that's what I'm after. And I hope that that's what comes from, from this conversation and this work group.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
As I mentioned before, we established a joint budget group and this is supposed to span between 2017 and 2019. And I would just like to hear, I really feel, Ms. Schultz, that this could be one of the things talked about in this group, but I kind of want to hear from staff if you, based upon, because what's happening now is, as I said, it's, it would be made up of the chairman of the Board of Supervisors, the, the budget chair, the chairman of the school board and the budget chair of the school board at a minimum. This, that's what this, that's how this group stands now. And then staff works in tandem and there's kind of executive committee meetings and then sta- the staffs work together. But Ms. Quinn or Ms. Michael, can you just speak to, and, and I'm not trying to change your amendment, Ms. Schultz, because I think that the, the, the theory behind it, the, the rationality behind wanting to have is, is something I would support. I just want, I just don't want this joint budget work group, which is just being established to be working in a, in a silo when it could be all together. And I, and I don't know if you have the answers right now, ladies, if you feel like this would be, it's better as standalone or if it would be something that could be part of this joint work group that deals with budget issues and costs. And I'm putting you on the spot, I know. I'm sorry.
I, I think the work plan from the joint budget work group was already identified and put in place. And the last item on here is to compare compensation, starting with the salaries and then we were going to start comparing the benefits. So there could be work that comes out of that particular work that lends itself to reviewing the pension comparisons. And then I think we also probably do need to re- look at the language that the county board has and their budget guidance on the work group that they are planning on putting together to look at pensions. So I think there are multiple options that you can pursue.
Okay. Well, thank you. In that case, what I would be doing, I will be supporting Mrs. Schultz's amendment. And as you said, it's, it's an offer out there if they accept it or if it gets morphed into, you know, something else. But I, I think, excuse me, the desire to, to work on this issue together is, is something and hope springs eternal.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So I, I will first say that to Ms. Darnett Kofax's question, having gone to a prior working group called the Joint Budget Committee, which anyone ever remembers going to those, that was so tangled, so convoluted, it made your head spin. So trying to get two boards and their staffs to wrap their brains around the two, you know, budgets and their, you know, their similar or competing needs, there's no way you can then muck it up with trying to tackle pension in between. I agree with Ms. Kofax that there's budgetary, you know, implications. So, I mean, one could say it, but having witnessed that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see that happen. I, I was very fortunate to serve on the turf task force and why it was so successful is because it had a very well-defined problem that needed to be examined and a solution that needed to be found and the finances to, to fund the solution. And that was about nine or 10 months. The Board of Supervisors and their budget guidance have said they want to look at these pensions and they want to be able to have something in place by the time they set their FY19 budget. So that's put that into a one-year capsule. So for Ms. Schultz's joint pension work group with the Board of Supervisors, yes, it's very painful for me right now to be, you know, putting my hand in voting up for something that I lobbied so hard all night to do. But I am going to ask, you know, I guess, Ms. Quinn, you've been a saint and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but earlier today when we were having our conversation about all this, and I was saying why I thought that deferring would be beneficial. And, and one of the things we talked about is that you don't reopen pensions every single year and change the benefit, you know, requirements and things because that means you're now putting a new set of employees on a new set, set of benefit, pension benefits and it, the administration costs alone. So to this proposal on the table, hypothetically, the Board of Supervisors, we could vote this tonight. Board of Supervisors, you know, take the offer and say, great, come on in and work with us on it. Hypothetically then, we could literally take tonight's decisions and adjust them to more closely mirror what the joint group ends up deciding to do and that would just be a new cohort of employees going forward. And that just will unfortunately have some administrative costs to it.
That's correct.
Okay. So, you know, Ms. Schultz, you know, I did not foresee we would find ourselves here tonight. Yours at least gives us an opportunity to hopefully have a collaborative seat at the table, looking at our pensions. It will be very interesting to see if they, A, welcome this opportunity and B, then what happens a year from now, because that is their defined goal and that's what this would need to be. And who knows then what that means for ERFC.
Ms. Hines? Uh, Ms. Corbett Sanders? Oh, she's away from the table. Oh, all right.
I'll be supporting Mrs. Schultz's amendment, our, I can, follow-on motion. I do encourage that the joint work group makes a concerted effort to include stakeholder input into its deliberations and that would be the one thing that I would encourage in this going forward.
Mrs. Strauss?
I'd like to call the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. That's a nonrevatable motion. All those in favor of calling the question? Hines, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Darnett, Kofax, McElveen. I'm sorry, could I see the show of hands again? This requires a two-thirds vote. Okay, so Hines, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Darnett, Kofax, and McElveen. That motion does not pass. Mrs. Strauss, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, then I will support it.
Ms. Palchek?
Sure. Yes, I will be supporting this motion. Mostly, I think my personal frustration with our process on the ERFC decision from the beginning has been a trickling in of information, whether from staff, the community, employee groups, advocates. And I think we've made a decision tonight, but moving forward, I hope that this joint work with the Board of Supervisors, and I agree with Ms. Huff, would have been easier if we were at a similar place. But I do think it would behoove us to come together and pull our resources, get as much expertise, information as possible and a clear focus on this. Like I believe Ms. McLaughlin at this point, I can't remember who said it, said that I think having a very defined goal, and I think pensions are the easiest way to be able to compare what we offer, much easier than looking at our major salary scales. So I do hope that we can start to look at how we, our plans function, how we can move forward, especially since approximately 20%, I believe, of our employees are on the FCERS plan, can, can figure out where we're going in the long term and hopefully perhaps also find some efficiencies in our plans. So I will be supporting this. Perhaps after this, they can learn from our wonderful work in improving our health benefits, thanks to Dr. Ramey and his team. But beyond that, I will be supporting this and I, I do hope that it is a focused and productive group and will help us have better answers in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be supporting this amendment, the follow-on motion as well. I do have a, a quick question for the maker of the motion. Ms. Schultz, are you envisioning a, a particular makeup? Are you envisioning this as being a subset of the school board meeting with a subset of the Board of Supervisors or some other idea?
Well, it was funny because when Ms. Darnett Kofax earlier was saying that she assumed it was going to be chairman, chairman, budget chair, budget chair, the other one, okay. I, I didn't presume that. I presumed that you and Chairman Boliva would solicit interest for those who, who would be interested and who, and who were dedicated to doing it.
So, so a couple, similar to the way we did the Infrastructure Finance Committee where there were three people from both boards, I, I see.
Sure, sure. I, I didn't anticipate that we were going to get bogged down in the, in the details tonight, but yes, I appreciate the question.
No, but I just wanted to know that that was, that was the, that was the concept.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With that, I will take a vote on.
I'm sorry, my, my light's still on.
Oh, your light is still on, Mrs. Schultz. Oh, go right ahead.
I just, for, for those who are talking about this with budget, look, in ed- in edguspeak, there has to be chunking of the work. And trying to roll this into a joint budget discussion makes the scope too large. And we need to have discrete tasks. And Ms. McLaughlin, I think that that's what you were alluding to with, with the turf task force. This is a discrete task and Ms. Palchek, I think you were sort of going there. I, I think the motion speaks that it is in fact a discrete task. I don't, I don't think it needs to be any more discreet than it actually is. And so you need a small task, you need a definable goal and, and, and that makes the work doable. If it's too broad, if it's too overly broad or too complicated, that's where I think you get the bogging down of Murphy's Law, that, you know, government will take, you know, as much time as it is given to do the task at hand. And, and I think the smaller we make this, the we make this specifically about the, the pensions of the county side and our side, that makes it clean. And that's what I attempted to do with this, with this motion.
Thank you very much. With that, I, with the, I will reread the motion. I move to establish a joint pension work group with the Board of Supervisors to review and evaluate county and school pension plans. All those in favor, raise your hand. Hines, Palchek, Huff, Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, Wilson, Darnett Kofax. All those opposed? McElveen, that motion passes. Thank you all for all the thoughtful work that went into a complicated topic. We move to the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda lifting several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members in the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 4.01, approve the minutes of the March 23 and April 6, 2017 regular school board meetings. 4.02, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 4.03, confirm the separations for the period beginning March 1, 2017 and ending March 31, 2017. 4.04, confirm the appointments and separations for the period beginning January 1, 2017 and ending March 20, 31, 2017. 4.05, award a contract for the Glasgow Middle School Modular Relocation Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Pinnacle Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,744,000 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.06, award a contract for the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology Synthetic Turf Field installations to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Sprint Turf LLC, in the amount of $1,694,000 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.07, award a contract for the Sandberg Middle School Synthetic Turf Field Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Sprint Turf LLC, in the amount of $483,865 and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.08, authorize staff to negotiate professional services contracts with selected firms for construction, testing, and inspection services and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer contracts on behalf of the school board. 4.09, award a contract for portable classroom trailer purchase to Vanguard Modular Building Systems LLC as the most responsive and responsible offerer and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.10, approve the 2017 to 2018 Annual Special Education Plan, Section 611, Part B Grant Funding Application, and Section 619, Part B Preschool Grant Funding Application as detailed in the agenda item. Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item 5, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled for a future meeting. 5.01, approve the students' rights and responsibility policy as detailed in the agenda item. 5.02, award the contract for the boiler replacement at Poe Middle School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.03- 5.03, award the contract for the boiler replacement at Lindbrook Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.04, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at West Springfield Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.05, award the contract for the boiler replacement at Woodley Hills Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.06, award the contract for the running track replacement at Annandale High School to Field Turf USA, Inc., in the amount of $327,229.71, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services, either of whom may act without the other, to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.07, award the contract for the running track replacement at South Lakes High School to Field Turf USA, Inc., in the amount of $456,399.50, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services, either of whom may act without the other, to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.08, award a contract for the Madison High School Synthetic Turf Field Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.09, adopt the attached resolution requesting the board of supervisors to approve and to take all necessary and appropriate action to place on the ballot for the November 2017 general election, a school bond referendum in the amount of $315 million. I'm now going to take out of order item 9.03, confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. We were originally going to have all of our closed meeting after the regular meeting. However, we were able to have a brief closed meeting and get this business done. So with that, I'm going to call on Ms. Schultz for a motion. Which is M1.
Thank you. I move to excuse from attendance at school certain students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1254B1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? That is unanimous, and that motion passes. I call on Ms. Hines for a motion.
Yes. I move to, I move that the annual contracts for the instructional personnel identified in closed meeting not be renewed for the 2017-2018 school year.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Corbett-Sanders. All those in favor? That, okay, Hines, Palchek, Schultz, Corbett-Sanders, Strauss, Evans, McLaughlin, Darnett-Kofax, and McElveen, all those opposed, all those abstaining, Mr. Moon? That motion passes. I call on Ms. Hines for a motion.
I move to grant the school reassignment appeal of a student who distributed a controlled substance at school, and to modify the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second? Seconded by Mrs. Schultz. All those in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous with, oh, with Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Huff away from the table. I call on Mrs. Schultz for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who sexually assaulted other students at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
All those in, oh, seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor? That is unanimous with Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Huff away from the table. I call on Mrs. Schultz for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who sexually assaulted other students at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the superintendent.
Is there a second?
Seconded by Mrs. Strauss.
All those in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous with Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Huff away from the table. And that concludes our confirmation of action taken in closed session. We now turn to superintendent matters. Dr. Lockhart?
Because of the time, I will defer our comments this evening. Thank you.
Wise man, thank you. We have board committee reports, and I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a report on the Governance Committee.
So in the interest of time, colleagues, I just want to let you know, I will send you a summary of the Governance Committee meeting, but to the public, just the Governance Committee did meet, and we were discussing a contract opportunity for McLean High School and FH Fur, and the Governance Committee did reaffirm that we are going to be making a policy decision before making any other decision, but the goal is to bring something to the board in May.
I call on Mr. McElveen for an update on the Public Engagement Committee.
The Public Engagement Committee looked at the Governance Manual portion that deals with board communications. We came up with some edits to that, which we will be bringing to the full board at a coming work session, who knows how long from now. And secondly, on the education summit, we have kind of put a hold on that for understandable reasons.
Thank you. I call on Ms. Hines for a report on the Audit Committee.
Audit Committee met yesterday for our monthly meeting. We discussed the FY18 Audit Plan Development Process. If board members have not heard from Teresa Weatherman, she should be contacting you to sit down and have a conversation with you about your ideas for the FY18 Audit Plan. The committee also reviewed Regulation 1410, Procedures for Reporting and Investigating Ebezzlement, Fraud, Waste, or Abuse. I think we finally had our final conversation about that with Mr. Foster, and it hopefully will be coming to a work session near you, board members, because we want to talk to you about it as well. We received two business process turnover audits for two schools, a high school and elementary school. One of the things that came out of that conversation is a recommendation that school board members follow up with regional assistant superintendents on business turnover, business process turnover audits. These are the audits that when there's a turnover in personnel at a school, the office of the auditor general does a business process turnover audit. And sometimes there are findings in these audits, and they do go to the regional assistant superintendents, so that might be an opportunity for board members to follow up on what's happening in some of our schools. We also heard, we received the report of the audit of the carryover fund and ending balance. The Audit Committee felt that the report did not quite go far enough, that the scope of the audit was not complete, so we're going to continue to talk about that. We had an update on eligibility and health claims audits, and I would just say, Madam Chair, the Audit Committee does need time at a work session soon to discuss the OAG reporting to the full board and to bring Regulation 1410 to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Does Ms. Darnett-Kofax have a report on SKEP?
I do, I'm not sure.
Yes, no, that was, you were next.
Oh, okay.
Go right ahead.
I don't see me on this list, but great. The SKEP Committee met on April 26, a few days ago, and what was interesting is, in light of our lengthy conversation about budget earlier tonight, we talked about children's funds and how communities have successfully implemented children's funds aimed at, you know, a particular fund, they're done in a multitude of ways, but we had a lengthy presentation and conversation, and it is something that I personally, and I think Ms. McLaughlin shared my enthusiasm, that these are things that we, as a county, should be looking at, and there is some, I think there, we didn't make definitive decisions, but we definitely want to have something like this when our joint boards meet, so everybody has a better understanding of that. We talked about quickly, there is a, Ms. McLaughlin, you might have to help me, oh, here it is, the livehealthyfairfax.org. This is a new, I don't think it's new, but the part about the SKEP Committee is new, and it's burgeoning out. So I think it's important that we all look at this, so you can keep in touch with all of the work, because the SKEP Committee, it has a robust work plan, and we are looking forward to doing lots of things in a joint way. The one Fairfax does live on well in the SKEP Committee. And finally, the SKEP Committee itself will be having a retreat on June 7, and I will look forward to bringing back to you the information that we discussed there.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett-Kofax. We now turn to board matters, and I call on Mr. McElveen.
Pass.
Ms. Darnett-Kofax?
Pass.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Pass.
Mr. Moon?
I yield my time.
Ms. Strauss?
Pass.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
You're going to hate me, but I do want to thank First Lady Dorothy McCullough for visiting Fort Belvoir Elementary School today. It was a wonderful opportunity for the First Lady to hear about all of the good work that's going on at Fort Belvoir, as well as the challenges faced by our military-connected youth. And so we're looking forward to a continued dialogue with her and focusing on how we can get more resources.
Mrs. Schultz?
Thanks, Mr. McLeavens. Mr. Hickerson, you know for what. I appreciate your time.
Ms. Huff?
Green cards to all my colleagues to the left, yellow card to Ms. Corbett-Sanders. Oh, I thought you were going to say to your colleagues to the right, so. I haven't decided yet. Good night.
Ms. Palchek?
She passed. I passed. We all passed.
So I will be very brief, but I am not going to let tonight pass without saying hooray for the bond referendum that we just passed as part of the consent agenda. Falls Church High School is on the bond for planning. Hooray! And with that, this regular meeting is adjourned, but do not go away, because we, well, I'm going to read the motion again.